All right, love the colors. All right, reports from our two school board, or student representatives for the school board from both schools. Superintendent's report. We will then invite anybody from the public who would like to speak. I certainly hope that you didn't all come to speak.
I hope you did.
Well, you'd be welcome to, but it'd be a long act. We have the consent vote agenda to approve program and personnel committee updates, facilities and finance committee updates. We will have a property committee update tonight since we didn't meet earlier. Anything from SEDOL, Karen? Nothing from SEDOL, nothing from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and that'll do it. Okay? All right, let's start with recognition.
Yes, and it's the most fun thing that we do on a month-by-month and year-by-year basis, and so we've got some great news to celebrate from Vernon Hills High School tonight. We're going to turn it over to Principal Dr. Ellen Squick.
Thank you, Prentice. We just had a wonderful weekend. It was so nice that the board organized the board meeting to fit right with the state finals and all, and give them the day off to have Monday to just celebrate their wonderful weekend down in Peoria. But this, just this past Saturday, we had just a wonderful day down at Detweiler Park in Peoria, and both teams have just had fantastic seasons, and they culminated their seasons with each of the teams, the girls and boys cross-country teams, taking home a third-place IHSA state trophy. So, we're very proud of them. It was very exciting. It was exciting today. All the kids were in their neon sweatshirts and, just a real high level of excitement today for the kids when they came back to Vernon Hills, and so nice to also celebrate this recent state championships here at the board meeting. So, both our coaching staff, both the girls and the boys, I'll introduce them and have them come up and just briefly, very briefly, just kind of outline how they got to this finish. So, we'll go girls first, and we'll start with Head Coach Suzanne Richard with her assistant coach, Mr. Wolf. So Suzanne, if you could just come up and just do a real quick recognition of your kids.
I'll stand next to you for a second. All right, you'll have to excuse my cold that I have, that I got the day after we got third. I just want to start by saying that we've got a great group of kids here, and a lot of support from our parents and from our administrators. Ellen was there, Brian was there, John was there, my husband Chris was there. So, we had a lot of support from the school, and it was great to see down in Detweiler. It was just a perfect, beautiful day down there to run, and we've got some terrific kids that have been there once before, but they had never been in this kind of pressure-packed situation, and they handled it really, really well. So, I just want to introduce some of those kids, or all of these kids that came with us. Why don't you guys come forward when I say your name? First, we have, I'll start with Melanie Rogers. She's a junior. Lauren Kim is also a junior. One of our all-state athletes was Cassie Lyra. She's a senior. Another all-state athlete was Vivian Overbeck. She finished 11th. She's a sophomore. Shannon Skiow is another sophomore. Samantha Hirschman is a junior. And Lexi Reich is a sophomore. And we also had to have four alternates come with us. Natalie Miller is a junior. Sophomore Molly Wasserberg. Junior Mackenzie Renahan. And a senior Mallory Rose. So, thank you for recognizing us tonight, and this is our team, and we're, most of them are coming back next year. We're just losing two seniors, so we hope to be right back here next year at this time. Thank you.
We want to get a picture with you again. We want to get a picture with you again, okay? And then, great artwork. Congratulations.
Bear, can you get everybody in? The folks just come on in. Maybe we can stand behind. Can you get everybody in, Bear?
Yep.
There you go.
Mr. Whitney, come on forward. And for the boys' team, Mark Whitney, the head coach, and Adam Lukin is his assistant.
Thank you very much, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to introduce these terrific athletes, fantastic student athletes, and just great people. We had really a tremendous season, the boys. I think if someone said going into the state final, we'd be undefeated. We knew we had a good team, but I'm not sure we thought we'd be that good, and it just has been a tremendous season and really a testament to the hard work and dedication that these student athletes had, not only this past year, but really over the last several years, because it takes, it takes time to build a strong program, and that's what they've done. So, they've really put this Boys Cross Country Program on the map for Vernon Hills, and also in the state. They're leaving a legacy, and not only do we have a great group of senior leaders and some great junior student athletes, we also have a group of strong freshmen and sophomores coming along, so we're feeling good about the future as well. So, I'd like to congratulate and recognize each of our guys for their great season and great performances. I think I'll start with our, also start with our top seven runners. First, I'll start with Kyle, Kyle Whitney. He's one of our all-state athletes. Nick Weber, senior. Ben Hordick, senior. Rob Williams, senior. Tyler Smith, freshman. No. Arthur Hopper, senior. And our number-one alternate, Trevor Moyers, sophomore. Our number-two alternate, Keith Carlson, senior. Brian Castellanos, sophomore. And Sam Lehman, sophomore. Caleb Chu, sophomore.
Let's get a picture.
Yep. Here, let us walk down.
Mary, can you get us all in?
Do we need to kind of rotate a little bit?
There you go.
Before you all leave, we just like to celebrate student success here. We want to make sure that we thank all the parents and the families and the friends for all the time that you've spent over the years, investing in your children, getting up early, taking them to practice, driving them to meets, and all of the things necessary for them to be successful. So, we'd like all the parents and the friends to stand up, and we'd like to give you all a round of applause. And thank you. And we do want to tell you it's okay if you want to leave. We'd love to have you stay.
Come to stay.
Ellen, you're right. Ellen, you're right. I'm having a board meeting on Tuesday.
All right, ready? Yeah. Okay, all yours.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ray Albin. I'm the Associate Principal at Libertyville High School, and together with John Gilliam from Vernon Hills, we're going to give you a few minutes this evening on Common Core, state standards, and moving forward with assessment, just a little bit. So, like any good class, any good lesson, we have to start with our goals for the day, and our goals are simply to become a little bit more familiar with the Common Core standards movement as it was, how those standards are being applied in our classrooms, and then moving forward with the next generation of assessments that are beginning to both get formulated as well as get talked about for implementation. Right now, for us, that means PARC, and John will give you a further explanation as to what PARC is and what's that going to be like for us as we go into the future. This map indicates what has become a more or less nationwide movement of standards, which is very different than how standards obviously first started in education. They were very much standards for education, were local standards under local control. The National Governors Association is what started this movement of Common Core. The map shows that there are 45 states. The latest from Common Core says 46 of our 50 states have adopted Common Core state standards. Those standards are in English, Language Arts, as well as math. But through English Ling-, English, through English Language Arts, there is a strand of literacy which extends to science, as well as social studies and other technical subjects, which really makes the Common Core standards sort of the de facto standards in everything that our students are doing. The literacy strand is really what's connecting everything all together. The standards are based off of some thinking about 21st century learning. They are very much about some of the new ideas and concepts that our students are going to be hearing, which is about problem solving, as well as re-looking at information more in line with what our students are going to be facing once they leave high school and either enter post-secondary education or the job market. In English Language Arts, the couple of things, this is a slide, it actually comes from Common Core, but a couple of things to really sort of call your attention to. First off is, on the left-hand side, they talk about reading for literature and reading of nonfiction text. This is one of the big changes of Common Core in the English Language Arts and Literature section, is that they're really making a distinction now of nonfiction technical reading, okay? This is inherent not just in English class. They're really talking about nonfiction, technical reading in sciences, in social studies, as well as in the applied arts, because what the feedback that the National Governors Association was hearing was that our students, when they got to college and beyond, were not very good technical readers. So, this is trying to infiltrate this back all the way down into the elementary school level. The other thing you're starting to see is some strands of level of text complexity. This is the first time standards have really talked about text complexity. Common Core gives very specific examples of what text complexity is and how those texts should be being integrated to our students, starting from their elementary school all the way through their high school years. In writing, they start to make some differences about different types of writing. It's beyond just an expository essay. They begin to talk about different narratives, as well as some technical writing, okay? Being able to write a list of directions, or being able to write a sort of like a technical manual, if you will, in a small, you know, small aspect, because once again, we weren't very good at the next level at college and beyond at some technical writing, so this now becomes part of Common Core with their standards. They also broke down, you'll see, speaking and listening, as well as some ideas which is language usage in general. What we have done, we've taken all of this, we've looked in, we've looked at the Common Core, the benchmarks, their anchor standards, and we've gone to a couple of different workshops, and on us, what we've tried to reduce Common Core in the English Language Arts aspect is to three things, because these are sort of, for us, the take-home message about Common Core. The first is that we want to incorporate rich, nonfiction text beyond the textbook into the classroom. We're really talking about not only just reading our textbook, but going out beyond that, looking at nonfiction text, and really using that beyond just the English classroom. That's one of the things that Common Core is really talking about, is when it says a standard for English Language Arts, it doesn't just mean English class. The literacy strand connects everything back to Common Core. So, you're talking social studies, you're talking science, and all of your applied arts. So, that nonfiction text is picked up in all of those classes, as well as a little bit in English, but we still want fiction text as well, so English class obviously is going to be covering that. The second aspect is development of a rich academic vocabulary. All the research indicates that vocabulary acquisition and usage is of prime importance all throughout schooling, and Common Core is making a huge push about understanding and usage of academic vocabulary. And then, the third aspect is spoken evidence using, or should say arguments, spoken arguments using evidence from the text. This is something that's very common to us as adults. We can't just take a position and not use evidence to support it. This is not something that's as common with our students, and certainly not common with the testing of our students, but it's going to become much more commonplace as these standards get integrated, all the way through elementary school, through high school. In places where these standards are being seen, one of the most poignant videos I've seen is a second-grade video of a class, a class of second graders, and they're talking about something that they had just read, and you see these little second graders stand up, and they say, "I believe that, you know, this, the dog's position on this was blah, blah, blah," as evidenced in the text as seen by this. So, they're really sort of describing what's going on, and you're just like, wow, second graders are doing this. We certainly have to start working on that at the, at the high school level. So, these are the three takeaway points that we are sort of presenting to our teachers as the main points of emphasis with Common Core, with English Language Arts. So, how does that all work in terms of a framework? What are we trying to do then at, at the high school level to integrate all the Common Core ideas into our classrooms? One of the things we're, one of the things we're doing is we're talking about putting this in sort of a framework, which we call the Ways of Thinking. Using several different consultants, literacy-based consultants, they've talked to us about ways that good readers read. These are things that good readers do all the time, and they've also expanded upon that to say, it's not just things that good readers do all the time, these are things that good thinkers do all the time. They make predictions, they can summarize, they can, if you look at the list, they can make connections, they have opinions, they know how to formulate questions. And what we've done is, looking at this at the high school level, we've said that these are really theme ideas that can be used in any classroom in our building, okay? And it gives us that common vocabulary that we're going to teach you how to summarize. We're going to teach you how to make a good question, how to craft opinions and support them with evidence. And this is what we're sort of using as our way of teaching the Common Core skills in all of the curriculum in our classes. So, we've begun doing this this year. We've started with really looking at summarization, questioning, and text structure, and we've provided a lot of different professional development opportunities for our teachers to begin to look at this and really incorporate it into their classroom. And it's really incorporating a lot of baseline literacy strategies, as well as just a way, a thought process of incorporating literacy in general and some bigger theme ideas into the class. And for us, what really spoke to us with this, this framework was, when we went through teacher training, we were teacher-trained in our subject, our content area. I was trained as a biology teacher. I was not trained as a literacy teacher. I was sort of, all of those things, by the time I, you know, by the time my students got to high school, it was sort of like assumed they will know how to make a prediction. It was assumed they will know how to take notes, and as you've been teaching, you find out that's not the case. We have to make that very explicit in our instruction so that they know how to take notes, how to formulate a good question, and these are the ways that we're going to get those themes across to all of our students. Now, this is a sample prompt from one of our, what's called PARC, and John will explain. That's a consortium that's building the next generation of tests. And I included it to sort of show you, number one, it's very different than an ACT prompt of a question, and to show you just how much the thinking has changed in terms of using the Common Core standards and what it's going to mean for assessment. So, I'll, it's a little small. I'll read it to you a little bit here. So, it says, "Take what you have learned from reading Daedalus and Icarus by Ovid and to a friend whose work has come to triumph." So, these are two works that the students would be presented with. They're about a page in length each. It says, "And then write an essay that provides an analysis of how Sexton transforms Daedalus and Icarus. As a starting point, you may want to consider what is emphasized, absent, or different in the two texts, but feel free to develop your own focus for analysis. Develop your essay by providing textual evidence from both texts. Be sure to follow the conventions of standard English." And this would be a writing prompt that students would be given. They'd have the two texts in front of them. They are texts that they have never read before. They would be reading them, they would be looking for points of argument to compare and contrast these two works. They would then have to write it in a standardized format, comparing the two authors' usage of Daedalus and Icarus throughout the, throughout the passage, and their argument as to whether they were more the same, more different, or whatever premise they're trying to prove. This is very different than the testing right now that our students are seeing with, with ACT, and this is what, something that we're going to be sort of moving towards. And that's just part of it. That's the English Language Arts part, and now John is going to talk about what the math movement's all about.
Thank you. Right? All right, so, I talked a little bit about the ELA. So, what is it that the Common Core has to say about mathematics, kind of the second level of this new Common Core shift? In general, what Common Core is aiming to do is connect core mathematical practices to standards for mathematical content, so connecting practices to content. I think it's probably fair to say that, over time, there have been national studies that are pretty famous that talk about the gap in United States in comparison to other countries, and this gap has to do with the connection between the content and the practices. That's this understanding that is learning. So, that's in kind of a nutshell what the Common Core in math looks like. Now, let's just take a look at the core mathematical practices. There are eight of these practices that the Common Core establishes, and as you read through those, I think it's probably fair to say that, that those would kind of mirror the same things that you and I concentrated on in our math classrooms as we went through school, right? They form the varieties of expertise that all students should be attending to as they go through their schooling in mathematics, right? This is another way to group those practices, and you can see habits of mind, reasoning and explaining, modeling, using tools, seeing structure and generalizing. These create the procedures, the processes, and proficiencies that kind of categorize these practices. I think it's also fair to understand that these, for the most part, are not new. Common Core has used, kind of establishes practices from NCTM, which is the National Teachers of Mathematics Organization, so these are not totally new. That kind of develops our practices. Then, we're going to go look into the content, all right? So, the practices and the content. The content focuses on three themes, all right? The first is focus. And again, TMS and other national studies have concluded that, in general, mathematics curriculum in the United States is a mile wide and an inch deep, all right? A mile wide and an inch deep. And the, the conclusion of that is that we spend far too little time on the important topics. We don't go into enough, enough depth into those topics, and that all too often, we have students who are left behind because of the need to move on, right? So, Common Core aims to focus. The next is coherence. Coherence has to do with making math make sense, right? It's not just a laundry list of skills that don't connect to one another at all. Coherence has to do with making sure that students understand the larger context of the skills that they're learning. And finally, rigor. Thought I had one extra slide there. Rigor, there are three areas of rigor that I won't touch on right now, that again, are not new, but the Common Core addresses as, as areas to balance as they approach these areas of rigor. There are two, two, two curricular approaches to the content for the Common Core. One is an integrated approach, and the other a traditional. So, just talk briefly about the integrated approach. Most of our middle schools, the math curriculum is in an integrated kind of setup, so that skills are based on age as they go through the curriculum, and the, the subjects are intertwined in those different age groups. Our curriculum in math is set up in a traditional system, where we start at Algebra I, we move to geometry, Algebra II, trigonometry, precalculus, and so, so on and so forth. Common Core allows a little bit of flexibility in this case, and the assessments that are being designed can assess students relative to age, or this traditional model in terms of content. Our schools have decided to stick with this traditional model, so that students will be assessed as they sit in geometry, Algebra II, not necessarily by the grade in school they are. So, what is the, kind of the impact for our students? Well, in the end, students are asked to do these three things. They're asked to solve problems with explanation. So, no longer is it just okay to give the right answer. Students are now asked to explain. It goes back to a little bit of Ray, what Ray was talking about, literacy. They might have to write their explanations out. They might have to use symbols to represent their explanations. Students are being asked to combine principles in multiple content areas, so that a student in geometry can't just forget the principles learned in Algebra I. A student in Algebra II must be able to use the principles learned in geometry and algebra. And finally, again, nothing new, but solving real-world problems. That's, you know, that's, that's been a buzz phrase since I was a math teacher back at Libertyville, but I do think it's fair to say that they've renewed the emphasis on creating meaningful problems out of the real world. Like Ray, I just wanted to show you a quick sample item. So, here's something that students now might be exposed to in Common Core. And again, this, I'll read this for you. Tom is doing an experiment adding golf balls to a glass jar containing water. The picture in the table sho-, the picture in the table show what happens to the height of the water as Tom adds golf balls. So, again, this, this could go several ways. This could be a simple linear algebraic function, which in this case it is, but it wouldn't take much to start to talk about this in terms of geometry, volume of spheres, so on and so forth, displacement. You could take that into even calculus and/or trigonometry as you start to talk about some of the, the rate of displacement, so on and so forth. So, this picture in itself can start to look at different content areas. These are a few of the ways that- These are a few of the ways that students will be asked to respond to this kind of prompt. And again, it's probably a little bit difficult to read, let me read these for you. Part A of the assessment asks students to identify an average rate of change for an approximate linear relationship. And then here's the literacy piece, to write a symbolic representation and to model the relationship using a non-traditional. All right? So this is something that wouldn't be scored necessarily by a Scantron, right? This would take human scoring with, you know, with a rubric, being able to assess the student's ability to analyze and synthesize this problem. Part B addresses student understanding of the concept of rate of change within the provided context. This item uses a machine-scored multiple choice. It requires students to select all correct answers from a set provided. Part C requires students to interpret both parameters, rate of change, why intercept of a linear function within the context. It requires significant reasoning above the mathematical ideas within the context and precise communication about the mathematical methods. So again, you can see that students are being asked not just to give a correct answer, but to be able to support the correct answer with summary and synthesis. All right? So that's a little bit about the Common Core math. As Ray said, I wanted to just mention briefly about how they are going to assess the Common Core. And Illinois is a part of a consortium, the PARC consortium, with about 20 other states that are developing assessments to be used nationwide, again, depending on how many states jump in with this. But this assessment will be a K-12 assessment as opposed to, you know, ISAT being middle school, PSAE being high school. So a K-12 assessment, designed to begin still, not this year, at the end of this year. Both schools will be involved in piloting some of these assessment questions. But the idea being that we would implement the testing in the spring of next year. And as it sits right now, there'd be two testing windows, one towards the AP exams, one after the AP exams. One of the things they're talking about is making it computer-based. So taking advantage of all the technology that we have and having students, instead of using paper and pencil, using Chromebooks, computer labs, other avenues to take these assessments online. For a school like us, makes some sense and could probably be done with some work. But you can imagine what some schools in our area and down south would have to do in order to get themselves to a place where all students could take two sets of tests in the spring. There's been a lot of talk about what's going to happen with ACT. As ACT has really been kind of the benchmark for kids and acceptance into colleges, or is Illinois going to get rid of ACT? What's going to happen with that? What they have said is that PARC probably won't have anything to do with college acceptance, but will have to do with college placement, so where a student is placed in a college. And I think it's probably fair to say there are more questions than answers as it relates to the future of assessment in Common Core. All right? Forget anything, Ray?
No.
All right, thanks for your attention. Question?
I want to talk about college and career. What about the person who's looking at going to the trades or skilled trade of some kind? Do you feel like this has got the same, is it focusing or giving those people the same chance to get out there and?
Yeah, you know, are you talking about the Common Core or the PARC now?
I'm not sure what I'm talking about. I'm looking at the whole thing you just presented.
Probably both, John.
I think so. And I'm asking myself, okay, I don't really want to go to college. I'm going to be riddled with debt, I may not get a job, so I'm going to go into the skilled trade. How is this a success?
So, in the formation of these Common Core standards, it wasn't just about college readiness. It was about college and career readiness. So it has as much to do with skills that can be applied to the next level in learning or skills that can be applied in the workforce. So in that regard, I think students are leaving with a distinctively differed set of skills that can be applied across both, you know, post-secondary education as well as career after high school.
The testing, too, would, since it's not being used in entrance towards any type of post-secondary school, it could be useful in terms of placement as well because it's going to be used along the lines of what like an ACT work keys right now currently is, which is career readiness. What type of skills do you have and where are you in that continuum?
So are these assessments just going to be in addition to lots of other ones? How many days of instruction are we giving these?
Lots. That's a good question. So picture this, we'd be talking about three graduating classes, freshman sophomore juniors, twice a year, with a battery of tests in both ELA and mathematics. You know, ideally, we'd be able to do all of those at one time. Realistically, that's probably not the case. So those are some of the logistics that we haven't hammered out. We're going to, like I said, we are going to pilot some of these assessments in the spring. We'll have a better idea of what they look like at that time and the manner in which we might be able to kind of apply the test. But for now, we're not exactly sure.
And John, when you really refer to "we," it's not us in District 128, it's the entire state of Illinois is not sure because we don't know what the rollout...
At this point, it's 20 states in this consortium.
And we don't know what the rollout looks like yet, and the state doesn't either. And that's kind of in the works.
There's a second consortium called Smarter Balance, who is developing its own assessment. And my guess is they're dealing with the same questions, you know, just a different context.
This is all a movement towards a more nationalized set of standards and a way to assess how we're doing against those standards, which is, you know, kind of diametrically opposed to the school systems that people of our vintage went to when it was very localized. And even there was very little comparison within the state of specific schools. So this moves us more to that front and is another step forward, if you will, from kind of an NCLB, AYP-driven type of model. But it will provide some assessment on how our kids are doing against the kids of Wisconsin if the kids in Wisconsin are taking PARC exams. So we're going to be able to do a little, we're going to be able to do measurement and assessment across the wider swath of states and school districts.
So if you gave these assessments in cursive, would the kids be able to read them? Or let me ask it a different way, is cursive dead in all this process?
Cursive handwriting?
Yeah.
That's probably in elementary schools.
It's not assessed.
It's not, yeah.
No, cursive isn't added in elementary schools, contrary to what they're reading. It depends on the district and what each district's philosophy is.
A lot of districts have chosen to keep cursive only up until certain grades, maybe not taking it after third or fourth grade, but making sure the kids know enough to be able to read it and to write their name, but then focusing on keyboarding. You know, some school districts have taken the plunge and said, no, we're just not going to teach cursive. I think that's a little bit far-fetched to myself because you still have to survive in both worlds, in the computer, you know, computer world as well as, you know, the paper and pencil world. We're still not completely computer-based yet. Most school districts that I know of have taken a more moderate approach and have not just banned cursive or just dumped it. But some have.
And that actually brings up a good point that Rita and I were talking about today, is that an assessment, a timed assessment on an electronic device, Chromebook, laptop, whatever, is really an assessment on your ability to type at that point.
Right.
Right? It has really nothing to do with handwriting at that point. And they're assessing your indirectly, unintended perhaps, your ability to type to communicate your thoughts.
And at this point, half the state doesn't have the bandwidth needed to even take these tests. So I'm questioning how they're going to have it another year. And who are they going to get to grade the writing part? I mean, we can't, so far, the state has canceled the writing test for the last, I don't know, four or five years because they can't afford to grade it because it's not a machine-generated response. So we no longer take the writing tests in ISAT in elementary grades. So I don't know, I mean, the money's got to come from somewhere at the state level for these.
Well, I think on the upside, for the first time really, we have the opportunity to really have some K-12 longitudinal data on a test that is, hangs together, it's normed over a period of time. There's been a huge disconnect between ISAT and the PSAE. And when they pumped the rigor up of the test last year, you saw the ISAT scores fall because the test was much harder. And the knock on ISAT was that it was not aligned with PSAE at the level of rigor. And so you had kids doing very well on ISAT in elementary, and then they were coming to high school, and they weren't doing as well, even though they should have been predicted to do well. So the one thing it will give us is some longitudinal data. Right now, when our juniors take PSAE and we get the scores back in the late summer, early fall, we're trying to compare students that are now seniors to our current juniors. It's not the same kids. And we cannot do deep analysis and prescriptive work with those students if we don't have that longitudinal data. So by testing students in their freshman, sophomore, and junior year, then we're going to have longitudinal data at the high school level, and we can actually do better interventions because we're going to have better data sources to look at. Rita, did you have anything you wanted to add to all of this?
Sure, I think kind of the good news that runs through these changes in assessment is that the common strand is that students are being asked to justify and explain their thinking in real-world settings in ways that will prepare them for the kinds of things that we don't, we can't even envision yet that they'll be doing in the workplace when they leave us and/or when they leave their college experience and post-secondary experiences. So the changes in assessments, while very uncertain right now, I think are moving in the correct direction of measuring student understanding and ability to transfer their learning to new settings. Haven't worked out the kinks, it's going to take a while for that to happen. But the good news is our students will be very prepared for these kinds of assessments with the kind of work our teachers are doing in classrooms with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Thank you.
All right, President's Report. I'll just remind everybody that next Friday is the Joint Annual Conference, so if you're going, I think there was some information provided, so we'll see you there. Student School Board Reps, who would like to go first?
Hi. And to start off, I know I was talking to Mrs. Luntz earlier, but Model United Nations for Libertyville just came back from a conference this weekend at Vanderbilt University, which is really exciting. I went, so I know I enjoyed it, seeing Vanderbilt's campus, Nashville, it was a really cool experience. And we came home with two Best Delegate Awards, an outstanding delegate and a verbal commendation for four different delegates. So it was a lot of fun, very educational, and we brought home some hardware. Skelastic Bowl, our season just started last week. We started off 2-1 in a four-team meet at Stevenson. We were losing to Stevenson, who's perennial state contender, so kind of expected, but it's a good start. Math team, we started a couple months ago, I re-reported on that before, but we have a meet at home this coming Thursday. Fiddler on the Roof was last weekend, and I went, and it was amazing, as expected, as usual from the LHS musicals. But we had some great performances from our seniors, as always, and it was just a fantastic show. I'd never seen it before. Debate, we just had a tournament at Framed High School. We had two seniors, Jojo Amder and Stevie Zhang, play second place in Varsity Public Forum Debate. Very exciting because it's a very big regional tournament. Student Council is on its Be the Giving type campaign, it's doing a canned food drive for the past few weeks. So that's going very successfully. And then Senior Student Council just concluded a couple weeks ago, I think a week ago or two weeks ago, it's coat drive, and we got over 50 coats for charity. So that was a very successful drive, and Student Council's keeping up with the charity work.
For LHS sports, the winter season's just starting, so, you know, everyone's tryouts have begun and everyone's really excited about it. Girls' swimming has made it to sectionals, and I think some did qualify for state, I'm not sure exactly how that works. Pat Hume for cross-country came in 46th and stayed at wherever this weekend, wherever Burnin' Hills Cross-Country is at, and created a record with 15 minutes 14 seconds. And then, right now, we're starting, we've started the WISH program in our therapeutic classes. Everyone's really excited about that, and everyone has been starting funding ideas and starting goals. And no teachers have promised to dye their hair yet, but I'm sure as desperation comes, that will happen. And yeah, everyone's just really excited.
So Dr. Scott has a volunteer job?
No, not yet. We're waiting.
Should we get her on record tonight on film?
Definitely.
Put a little board pressure on her. All right, thanks very much. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Lee.
Okay, we have some more good news tonight. It's glad to hear all the great news, and I'm glad Model you in got off to such a great start. That's really exciting because I know that's A-plus at Libertyville, that's great. The LHS Boys' Cross-Country Team donated $2,000 to the Why Not Project, a local nonprofit organization honoring Tony Borscha, and dedicated to stopping intoxicated boaters. The team also donated $500 to the Wounded Warrior Foundation. In the past nine years, the Boys' Cross-Country Team has donated more than $18,000 to charities. That's amazing. District 128 Special Olympics Team, The Storm, won last Saturday night's floor hockey state championship held at Northeastern Illinois University. The state championship team coached by Andy Compton, Sean Kelly, and Corey Atwell included Ellie Goldberg, Veni Lakoshi, Corey Truger, Eduardo Aguilar, Trevor Furman, Johnny O'Connor, Nick Sikari, Mallory Marvin, Mason Reyes, Michelle Shepley, and Austin Yosenhans. So congratulations to them. And this is their second consecutive state championship in floor hockey, so very exciting. We'll be seeing them toward the end of the year. They usually like to bring all the students in at one time, and that's also one of our favorite nights of the year. The VHHS Junior State of America hosted its first mini-con on November 2nd. Over 100 students from 13 high schools in Illinois and Wisconsin attended to debate and discuss current political issues. In order to save paper, the students created an online agenda that could be reached through smartphones by scanning a QR code. The event was entirely planned, advertised, and run by students, and was an incredible success. Congratulations to the Executive Board, Misha Bogdanov, Narin Akarati, Isabella Cosaglas, Shumbam Patel, Daniel Kuzmen, Alex Lau, and Vaibhav Shastri. And finally, we would like to recognize some very important people at tonight's board meeting. These individuals dedicate countless hours to help make our high schools outstanding places to learn and work. As a team, they oversee the district's budget. It's more than 3,000 students at LHS and VHHS, and it's more than 500 employees in recognition of their outstanding work on behalf of our schools and in honor of November 15th being School Board Members Day in Illinois. I would like to say thank you to our seven Board of Education members. Please join me in a round of applause and thanks for one of the best school boards on the face of the planet. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, next on the Superintendent's Report tonight, we have a brief additional update on student achievement. We covered this at the committee meeting, but we just wanted to say this publicly.
Yes, we just wanted to share some statistics about the AP program at both Libertyville and Burnin' Hills High Schools. The growth in that program over time has been stellar and includes growth in both the numbers of students who earn threes, fours, and fives on the AP exams as well as those who earn fours and fives in the last five years. The number of students taking AP exams and earning those scores on AP exams has doubled in the district. So we're really proud of that growth and of the numbers of students who leave District 128 with college credit in hand and start their college careers very successfully.
Great, thanks Rita. Any additional questions now that you've contemplated that? It's really good news, is our ACT and our advanced placement scores and the number of kids in those classes continues to increase. It's very, very exciting for everyone in the district. Next on the Superintendent's Report, and for the benefit of our public at home watching the meeting this evening, for about the last 10 months, we've been working with a large group initially of our first responders, which would include police and our fire officials, as well as our officials inside the district at both buildings, and our law enforcement experts, who are police resource officers in the building, to take what we have learned from some of the tragedies at a number of schools across the United States. We all remember about a year ago, Sandy Hook, the shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary School, and there have been... and there have been, been many prior to that, and to try and take the best knowledge that's out there in the field from the experts, incorporate that into a school safety and security plan for District 128, Libertyville, Vernon Hills High School, and the district office even across the street. And so, a large group of people led by Dr. Fleming have been working and researching this and meeting with people for over 10 months. We had a very, very healthy presentation and discussion at our committee meeting last Monday and the majority of the board took our recommendation to move the plan forward. What we'd like to do publicly tonight is just highlight the pieces of the plan that we're looking at at this time and then we'll make a recommendation to the board that they endorse the plan and then as we discuss it at the committee meetings, we'll begin to do the detail work on this and we'll be bringing additional bids back to the board for their approval through our committee and approval process at the board meeting. So, Al?
There are about five or six initiatives that we're looking at pursuing in the future. Probably the most visible one would be to reconstruct the entrances at both schools where we would have an entry where visitors to the building would be buzzed in. There would be at this station a panic button, so to speak, to call the police, much like we have in a, in a bank with the teller system. It would also include an automatic lockdown where if we, we discerned a threat, we would be able to lock down the building instantaneously from, from the information desk at the entrance of the building. Another initiative would be to take our entrances on the first floor and our classroom windows on the first floor and put in bullet-resistant film that would, even if penetrated by a bullet, for example, would deform the bullet, and even if penetrated with a bullet, it still is, it still is intact and would not let a perpetrator into the building. So that's another initiative we're looking at. The third and fourth one would kind of go together, we're looking at our camera coverage both inside and outside the building. We've identified blind spots in both inside and outside the building and we would cover those with additional cameras. And then in conjunction with that, some technology that would allow us to have keyless entries. We currently have such entries at our main entrances now, but we would have those in the interior doors in the building and all the classrooms and offices. So if there is a threat detected, we could lock all of the doors instantaneously. Teachers can also get in with swipe cards instead of keys, substitute teachers could use that, you can even take attendance with these swipe cards as students come into the class. So there's a number of technological advantages to that. We're also looking at what are called bollards, these stationary, could be anything from a post to a decorative ornament that is embedded in the ground that would resist a heavy vehicle from trying to crash into the entrance of the buildings or into any entry of the buildings. And then lastly, we're, we've looked at and we've already begun to expand our security hours on the weekends, at nights, in the evenings. We've not only expanded the hours, we've added additional personnel. So those are all of the kinds of things that we're looking at and we're talking about posted three, four million dollars, if we looked at all of those to the extent that we are. And so that, that again, bids would vary. The most, the most significant expense would be the cameras and the keyless entry. So those are all the kinds of things we're looking at right now.
And Al, Siemens would be our, Siemens Corporation would be our technical support and do the technical work on this?
Correct, we work with Siemens about the details and provide them with information and take the recommendations from them as to how we might roll this out over a three, four-year phase. We've got a three-phase process here that may take us three, four years to complete.
And Siemens is really the leader in the field at this point, based on our research, and they have done work right next to us at Stevenson that we've gone down and investigated doing very similar things down at their campus. I think the watchword for all of us and the board, of course, is always that our number one priority is to do our best to ensure the safety and security of our students. And one of the things that we want to make sure we did and that we do moving forward from our standpoint in recommending things to you is to ensure that, given what we've learned in the field over the last 10 years that the experts have learned, and the technology that is out there, to marry those two things and to provide the best possible security for the buildings and the students that we can. The students will tell you, because I know at Liberty, I'm looking at students from Libertyville tonight, the students will tell you at Libertyville they recently had a lockdown drill. And those have become much more serious and the administration is working very closely with your teachers and the student leadership in the building that we take those seriously, but there are some additional things that we need to do, given what we know that's out in the field. I also want to add this caveat, having said that, there is no absolute guarantee on any given day that an event could not happen here on a military base in the United States, in shopping malls and those types of places, but what we want to do is, to the best of our ability, take what we know is out there and what's available and what we can afford and apply those things with the idea that we will prevent, just by having those things, we will prevent most of the things that happen. And if we ever had an event through drilling and also the security procedures that we've put in place, that we would be able to slow that event down until the cavalry arrives, literally, to help us and that we can secure the building until we get additional resources. And probably the last thing for the public tonight is that our, we have offered both of our buildings for local law enforcement to train on crisis drills. And we like to do that for several reasons. One, it gives our local officers an opportunity to get to know our building better and the officers who would support them at both of the buildings. And secondly, it gives them an opportunity to train in kind of real-time situations within our buildings when we're off of school. So, you know, to Dr. Scott and Dr. Swick's credit, they have been more than willing to allow them to come in and, and use the building and do more live-type drills to do this. So, with that said, I think we had an outstanding discussion as we do on any issue of importance with this board at the committee meeting and Pat, at this point, I would ask, I would recommend and then ask for the board's formal approval to move forward with the plan as we have laid out.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? None? Did, did you follow up at all? Did you have a chance to follow up?
No.
Okay, okay, any other comments? All right, roll call please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, and the board will note we had one FOIA request this month in your board packet and Pat, that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you very much. Invitation for public comment, anybody from the public would like to speak?
I'm Warden Bolger, who's a sophomore at LHS and just have one quick comment. Thank you all for your, for your work, I think it's a wonderful school and things are going great. I do have a few questions for the board about the bond refinance and the related tax extension. Just looking at the fiscal year 12 audit, $128 million cash balance, it's a big pile of money, fourth biggest in the state as near as I can figure, 160% of our operating expenditures. Tax revenues every year seem to exceed our expenditures, we're growing by about $10 million bucks every year. And I commend your decision to pay off those high-cost bonds and get rid of a million dollars a year in interest, but why do we need to borrow $17 million to do it? So, my question, I guess, is with that large cash balance, why don't we just pay off the bonds, not borrow the $17 million? Avoid whatever origination fees there are, it looks like it's $180,000 of origination fees, I'm not sure if that's right, I'm just looking at the numbers there. So that'd be my question and then you could do away with the tax extension for about $5 million bucks a year for the next three years.
Okay, anyone, anybody want to comment?
I think you probably are asking the state because we're definitely not.
Okay, yeah, so hang out, we're going to try to address some of those topics.
Yeah.
All right, thanks very much for your comments. Okay, consent vote agenda is listed and was reviewed in committee, if I could have a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chairperson Mauer.
Okay, the first item we have is the 2014-15 Proposed School District Calendar. Need a motion to approve that calendar.
Will we accept the new calendar for 2014 and 15?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, the next item we have is the Drivers Education, Health, and PE Credits. We're looking for a motion to approve the graduation requirements proposal and this would standardize health, PE, and driver's ed credit and make them equal as other districts have done. This also, we would also, in addition to this, we would be increasing the N-number of credits needed to graduate, so everything would move up accordingly. But this would make it easier for transfer students coming in and out of different districts, both in and out of state. So we'd like a motion to approve those graduation requirements.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is the Board Policy 890 Parent Organizations and Booster Clubs and is the second reading and adoption. No information has changed from the last reading to this reading.
Shall we accept the new policy 890 for parent organizations and booster clubs?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, then the next board policy we have is the first reading and this is the actual Board Policy 6300 Graduation Requirements and this just updates the graduation requirements as we accepted earlier. So we need a motion to approve that policy for a first reading.
No motion required.
Oh, no motion required, okay. Educational tour requests, we have two field trips listed.
Move to approve the educational tour requests that's listed.
Second. Discussion? Roll call please.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye. And then finally, we have an approval for the employment of employees, there's one resignation. So we need approval of that.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Yeah, concludes the report.
Okay, Facilities Finance Committee?
Okay, we have three things tonight. The first one is rescinding the bond resolution adopted in September. Yasmin, could you give us a thumbnail sketch on that, why we're taking that course of action at this point?
Right, if you recall, when you approved the resolution, I believe it was in September, it did not indicate that we were looking to purchase our own bonds, that we were going to reissue. And basically, we are rescinding that particular resolution and the next item that you will approve, hopefully, will allow us to do that.
Okay, and I'd like to read the next one if I may for the viewers.
Do we have to do the rescension first?
Let's do the rescension. Rescind the first one, all right, so a motion to rescind the bond resolution adopted in September?
I make a motion that we rescind the bond resolution adopted in September as we did then.
So second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Deli Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ranser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, now?
Now does it make sense?
Yes.
Okay, we're addressing a resolution providing for the issue of $17,340,000 in taxable general obligation refunding school bonds, Series 2014 of Community High School District Number 128, Lake County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district and providing for the purchase of said bonds by said school district and for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. Yasmin, would you again give us an overview of that?
Certainly will, in fact, we have an expert here, Elizabeth Hennessy, who will walk you through what we are doing with the bonds and how we are marketing that.
Thank you, Yasmin. I handed out a presentation at your places tonight and the first couple pages look at a bond market update and as we mentioned, I think back last time I was here, rates came down a bit after the Federal Reserve decided not to pursue the quantitative easing, we've had a little volatility since then, but interest rates are still extremely low. Page two is a municipal yield curve, looks at interest rates from years 1 through 30. The green line is where we are as of last week and what this shows is that the lowest interest rates are in the short end of the yield curve, right where your bonds are maturing. So, that's good.
Well, can you move, can you move it forward? One more.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so pursuant to the Finance Committee's recommendation and the board's acceptance of that recommendation for the district to purchase its own bonds, what we looked at was other AAA-rated bond issues in the market in this past week to set the interest rates on these bonds that you are purchasing. So, what we do is we look at other issues and, let me explain the chart to you. The coupon in the yield is the same on your bond, your bond, even though these are tax-exempt rates, your bond is taxable as the district is investing and there's no need to get legal opinions on tax exemption when you're buying your own bond. So, just a note, by buying your own bonds, the cost of issuing these bonds are less than half that they would otherwise be if you were issuing tax-exempt bonds. So the purpose of this comparable pricing analysis is to set a rate on your bonds that's fair to the district as the investor and fair to the public who's going to benefit from the savings of the lower interest rates we have today. So, the yield is the middle column and that's the return to the district. And as you can see, the yield for the 2015 maturity is .58, for the 2016 maturity is .7, and for the 2017 maturity is .88. So, all told, under 1%. So how do we come up with those yields? What we look at is the spread to the AAA municipal market data yield, which is the tax-exempt AAA yield nationwide. In Illinois, we pay more money, more interest rate for our bonds than other states because of the state of the state. The district is outstanding, bond rating is AAA, of course, we did not go get that reconfirmed as you're buying your own bonds, no need to do that and other cost savings. So as we look at other deals out in the market, what allows us to compare issue to issue is the spread to the MMD because the MMD index changes every day. So we can look at a bond issue a week ago and look at that spread to the MMD Municipal Market Data Index versus today. So, on November 6th, there was a Lake County Road Sales Tax Alternate Revenue Bond in the market, AAA, and those yields were extremely low. And we looked at those and thought about the credit of the Lake County, the full Lake County versus School District 128. And I think those yields are unusually low. The next three deals, I think, are much more comparable. We have the Village of Oneeka, which is a AAA-rated bond, we have the Buffalo Grove Park District, AAA, and on the next page, we have the Village of Womat, also AAA. And you can see the yields and the spreads on these deals are all fairly similar. They're 30-plus basis points over that AAA MMD index and they were all priced last week. So we think these are more likely indicators of what, how your bonds would have sold in the market today if you were in the, in the market with a competitive sale. The last deal we have is the Highland Park 113, which is also comp- of Waneca or Womet for investment purposes, and similarly giving the yields that would affect the payments on the bonds and result in savings to the taxpayers. So that's kind of the justification for the yields. The next page looks at now the savings to the taxpayers in this scenario. So the savings to the taxpayers is $1,005,283 over the three years, approximately $335,000 a year. Present value savings, $988,000. And we talked a couple of months ago about that ratio. We want to make sure that ratio is very strong over 3%. Present value savings as a percent of the bonds refunded is 5.7, so well, almost double the 3% minimum. So what you're doing is we're taking off the market your current bonds, which have an average rate of 3.79%, and replacing them with these bonds, which have an average all-in true interest cost of .96%. So, questions?
Are we, are these bonds structurally ours forever? We cannot remarket them at any point in time? Is that correct? We cannot sell them to another party?
I'll have to get back to you with a legal interpretation on that question.
I mean, the rate would probably make it impossible. A taxable bond at this rate, you're not going to really be able to sell it to any other entity.
You know, you're right. Given that, you're right. You're absolutely right. Because you're buying it as a taxable bond. We don't have the tax exemption on this bond, so you're...
I think it makes it impossible for us to...
Right. It makes it practically impossible.
And that was the goal, is we are going to hold these bonds in maturities. There's no temptation to remarket them or sell them later.
Right. Good point.
And Elizabeth, what is the advantage, again, of the district buying the bonds themselves, ourselves, as opposed to, to go to Gordon's question earlier, as opposed to selling them, you know, on the market to someone else, to a third, to a second party?
Well, I think there's a couple benefits. Number one, it gives you the district an investment vehicle for its funds, which provides better return than the money market, yet at the same time produces savings to the taxpayers. You're also saving on the cost of issuance. The cost of issuing these bonds is less than half of what it would be if you did a full public sale.
Thank you. One other question. Back in October, there was an option for us to just completely pay off the bonds.
Correct.
And if I remember correctly, we were looking at a net savings to the taxpayer of $1.3 million. Is that still comparable? Have things changed where that number is no longer 1.3? It's closer to this $1 million you're showing us today? I guess what I'm trying to find out is what is the difference today between these two options? The one of us buying our own bonds or just paying them off?
Well, if you just took your cash and paid off these bonds as opposed to bought your bonds, the savings would be greater to the taxpayers because the bonds would disappear. They would be gone, and you would be cash out. Buying your own bonds, you are, in fact, making an investment. Okay? So as these bonds mature, you're still going to have your $17 million, $340,000 as part of the fund balance.
And we retain the right to abate.
You retain the right to abate.
That's the point. Year-by-year basis.
I think that's something, that's a point that needs to be made.
That's the key point. I mean, I think at the end of the day, and we did debate this quite extensively in our committee meetings, and, you know, I think an argument can be made on both sides of it without a doubt. And I think we were, I don't know if I want to say we were split, but there was a lot of, well, differences of opinion were, I think, discussed. So, and I think at the end of the day, we made two conclusions. One, with all the uncertainty, both at the state and at the federal level, understanding that the fund balances we have are quite substantial, you know, be it psychological or prudent or whatever, I think we felt most comfortable not pulling the trigger on paying off $17 million of bonds all at once. Okay? And the cost of issuing the bonds was not substantial. And I think in the end, we just felt like we wanted to have that kind of flexibility between the uncertainty in state and federal government, combined with some of the steps we want to take to address our security issues as well as some of our other capital needs. I think the other thing was, and I'm drawing a blank now.
You might not be able to think of a...
Oh, the second thing, to be very clear on that, which gets, I think, to your point of if we paid off the bonds, we wouldn't actually levy then for those funds. You know, it is the intent of this bond, for the la, or this board, for the last two years, we've made substantial abatements back to the taxpayers with the intent of really narrowing the gap between our actual spending and the revenues that we bring in. And I think if you look over the last couple of years, we're getting closer and closer to essentially balancing that. And it is our intent to continue to do that going forward. And I think where we really ended up with is, we feel pretty comfortable that from a taxpayer perspective, we're going to be able to do, if not the same, similar actions while still retaining that flexibility in our fund balance. So, you know, I think you're going to see going forward that, you know, we're going to continue to discuss the abatement approach here while at the same time refinancing the debt. So we don't intend to change those actions unless something unforeseen happens, either on the pension front or some of those things, which may cause us to change our mind. But I think our general agreement is, we would expect to continue the current practices, you know, going forward to try to minimize the impact of these things on the taxpayer.
And we're saving all the same money as if we were to pay the bonds off. The only difference is, is the issuance cost between, depending on $62,000...
$60,000.
I think it was placement fee and the legal fees. We're paying ourselves the interest, so...
Right.
You know, in essence, we are saving all the interest expense for the next three years. This kind of goes in one pocket, out the other. So, I mean, that's, I think, that's Stephen's question.
And while maintaining, while maintaining the flexibility in the event that, we don't know what decisions are going to be made, we have that flexibility to do the abatements on a year-by-year basis, rather than kind of doing it all at once and it's done, and then we can't turn back if we have a significant decision in Springfield, for example.
And just for one more clarity item here, I think it was mentioned, we were borrowing this money.
No.
That is not correct. We have this money.
Right. You're investing this money.
It's a transaction from the reserve to buy these.
Right. So it doesn't go from any different fund. It stays in the same fund. It's just like an investment. It is an investment.
Yeah. And then let me just be perfectly clear on you one more, but it is certainly not our philosophical intent, anyway, on this board to continue to add to fund surpluses at the tune of $8 or $10 million a year. All right? So while it's always difficult to know exactly where we're going to land because we never know for sure what our revenue is, and we try the best we can to know and control where we're going to spend, you know, it is our intent to, I'll call it essentially, take in what we need and no more, no less. Would you guys, anybody, anybody want to disagree with that? But I think that's clearly, that's clearly the approach we've taken here in the last couple of years. It's clearly the approach we plan to take going forward. So I think one way or another, we're trying to, we're trying to get this to even out. Any other comments? Anybody?
Well, I think through our budgeting process, we have been coming closer to...
We've been narrowing that, we've been narrowing that gap.
Yeah. To what's budgeted and to what is actually spent. And therefore, in actuality, over the last couple of years, it has not been a $10 million difference. That number has come out. There have been years where it was 10.
Yes.
But we have narrowed that gap. In fact, last year was 1.8 or something.
Pretty small. Yeah. And I will make one other comment. I'll also say, though, it's philosophically, I think, the feeling of this board, though, that we should not use those fund balances for the purposes of, you know, meeting our operating expenses. I mean, I think the one thing we're trying really hard to make sure we don't do is dip into fund balances to meet our everyday needs, only at some point to find that we're living beyond our means, and then have to take somewhat drastic, albeit unlikely, action with the taxpayers all in one shot. So that's all part of the balance, although I understand it seems to work in certain city and federal governments. We're trying real hard not to do that. If we, if we don't bring in the money that we need to spend year over year, and we start dipping into fund balances, and next thing you know, we're running, in reality, $5 million debts, $10 million debts, and all of a sudden, the fund balances are gone, then that puts us in a very, very difficult position. So I think one of the things we work hard not to do is go into those fund balances for things other than unintended events at the state and federal level, or what we would call one-time, big-ticket items that don't represent ongoing expenses. So at least philosophically, I think that's where our head's at. And, you know, I think it's good to share that with people since, for the most part, they don't hear most of those conversations.
Well, and then a run-up also to remember on the run-up on some of those fund, when we had larger disparities between revenue that we brought in and expenses. A lot of that, the current fund balance, was driven by the dramatic growth that we had in the district over a 10-year period. The addition of HSBC corporate headquarters, we had phenomenal growth here over a 10- or 12-year window. And we captured that new growth, and that really drove the revenue up and helped those fund balances. Having said that, Pat, I think you actually reflect where we've all worked over the last several years, and we'll continue to work, you know, forward together as we do the budget process. Principals have been great working with their staffs. Even though we have had, had larger fund balances over probably an eight- or 10-year window, we've reduced expenses in lots of areas as we look to be more efficient. So it's all a very good process.